Good evening, this is the regular meeting of the President and Board of Trustees of the Village of Burnham, Cook County, Illinois, today of October the 10th, 2017. At this time I will ask a question, take your role.
Trustee Cap?
Here.
Trustee Bonner?
Here.
Trustee Garcia?
Here.
Trustee Greer?
Present.
Trustee Richardson?
Here.
Trustee Clayber?
Here.
The floor is President, please stand for President.
President, we give you the highest and greatest honor America. To the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any approval or corrections of the minutes of the regular board meeting on September 26th, 2017? Any correction to the minutes that we need? If there are no corrections, I would ask for a motion to approve the minutes as they were.
You make a motion to approve the minutes as they were.
There's a motion on the floor by trustee Claybrook to approve the minutes of September 26th, 2017. We need a second.
I'll second.
Your second by trustee Cap, or please take your role, please.
Trustee Cap?
Yes.
Trustee Bonner?
Nay.
Trustee Garcia?
Yes.
Trustee Greer?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Clayber?
Yes.
Motion passed, thank you. Before we open the meeting to the public, if you have anything to say to the board, he will stand up and give your name and your reason for addressing the board. We'd be glad to entertain that information. I will ask for a motion to open the meeting to the public.
I make a motion to open the meeting to the public.
There's a motion on the floor by trustee Claybrook, we need a second. Second by trustee Garcia, would you please take your role, please.
Trustee Cap?
Yes.
Trustee Bonner?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia?
Yes.
Trustee Greer?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Clayber?
Yes.
Thank you, motion passed, the meeting is now open to the public. Are there any public comments? Are there any public comments? Are there any public comments from this side? Are there any public comments? I will ask for a motion to close the meeting to the public.
I make a motion to close the meeting to the public.
There's a motion on the floor by trustee Claybrook to close the meeting to the public. Do we have a second, please?
Second motion.
A second by trustee Bonner, would you please take your role, please.
Trustee Cap?
Yes.
Trustee Bonner?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia?
Yes.
Trustee Greer?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Clayber?
Yes.
Thank you, motion passed, the meeting is now closed to the public. What does he like to say in the mail report that we have a few trees that we're gonna cut before the winter sets in? And we got a couple of sidewalk repairs that we need to make that were excavated because of water main breaks. Try to get those taken care of, put some. And I just wanna go back a little bit and I would like to mention through the years of some of the accomplishments, you know, that have been made by this administration and the board of trustees in support. The old Cruzan bar was torn down at 138 in Grand Bay. And through the President Obama's administration, we got a $260,000 grant for the Village of Burnham, stimulus grant, and we put up the new light poles on Burnham Avenue and the new lightings. So we will update you through every meeting until we run out of successes. Thank you. For the village's mic, Lucy, yes?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I need to, the marshmallow roasting night that was scheduled for October 27th on a Friday, we need to reschedule it for the Thursday before, October, it being October 26th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. here at Longhead Park. And again, Secretary of State will be at the community center on October 31st from 10:00 to 2:00. So if you have to do any renewals on your driver's license or state ID or vehicle stickers, you can do so at the community center on October 31st from 10:00 to 2:00.
In addition to the marshmallow roast on the 25th, we trust about, it would be interesting seeing the park district. Over in the Jacka, feel like the night in the park.
Okay.
So the due date is the 25th?
Six.
Six.
Thank you, who wants to report your information? Public education and health safety awareness, trustee Greer?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I try not to be too long. Discussion of consideration of and taking action to approve or not approve on the hiring of Roberto Paredes? I don't know if I'm pronouncing that name correctly.
Paredes, ma'am.
Paredes?
Yes.
Okay, as a part-time police officer. Okay, I'm sorry. I have a letter dated October the 10th, 2017, from Chief Bellows. It's in reference to a part-time police officer's appointment. I am respectfully requesting the appointment of Mr. Roberto Paredes as a part-time police officer. He has successfully completed the application process and the required additional testing. Mr. Paredes is currently a full-time police officer for the City of Chicago Aviation Police. And as such, he has completed the police academy and is fully certified to assume the position as a part-time police officer.
So would you stand and tell us a little bit about your experience and how you feel to be an officer of the House of Commons?
Good afternoon, my name is Alberto Paredes. I've been with the aviation police department for 16-plus years. And I'm looking to go a little, a little step further. And so I, I would like to work for Burnham Police Department. And if, and if given the opportunity to be able to work full-time over here, I would take that chance.
Thank you, is there any other information that I have in question?
Yes, I have a comment. Mr. Paredes?
Yes, ma'am.
Welcome, thank you for wanting to join the Burnham family. Also, have I mentioned, as I mentioned before, it's a very small town. And our, our budget is limited, whereas we still have efforts that need to be made as far as community policing. Meaning being vigilant in the communities, in the neighborhoods, you know, protecting our children from speeders, keeping our mall clear of drugs such as crack cocaine arrest that was made by Lieutenant Bonner this summer in the mall. There's still crime in the mall. And I understand that our staffing may not always be where an officer can be present at all times in all places. But we still have to be where the people are, where the crime is, where the traffic is, the people traffic, not just vehicle traffic.
Correct.
I mean, keeping our streets good and safe is wonderful, but also we have to keep our communities safe. We have to keep the drugs and the guns out of our strip mall. Oftentimes, often, 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 I call the police because of loitering in the strip mall. That's inviting crime. Thank you, sir.
Do you make a motion, trustee Bonner, any information, any report of any other comments or questions? You make a statement.
Discussion of consideration of and taking action to approve or not approve. Okay, to approve the hiring of Alberto Paredes as a part-time police officer. He has successfully completed and passed the testing. It's a polygraph, a medical and drug test, and a psychological background.
You make a motion, please, a second?
Second.
There's a motion on the floor by trustee Greer, and a second by trustee Richardson? To have Alberto Paredes as a part-time police officer for the Village of Burnham, would you please take your role, please?
Trustee Cap?
Yes.
Trustee Bonner?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia?
Yes.
Trustee Greer?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Clayber?
Yes.
Thank you, congratulations. Thank you, congratulations again.
Thank you, sir.
Burnham Fire and Medical Report, this is for the month of September 2017. There was a total of 15 calls in all. There were five for the day and 10 at night. For the ambulance, there was 36 total calls. There was 19 during the day and 17 during the night. This Saturday, we would be celebrating open house at the fire department. It is fire prevention week. And we would be celebrating that on Saturday from 10:00 to 12:00. Take the gem, have a small bag then.
Yes, thank you, trustee. Every year during this week, we are more mindful of fire safety in the home. That means this is when we make sure our smoke detectors are up and ready. We have enough of them and our CO detectors are up and ready, we have enough of them. Of course, when we change the clocks in a little bit, that's when we usually do the batteries as well. But you can never check your fire safety equipment too often. That would also include fire extinguishers. And because it's gonna be getting cold eventually, it's probably also a good idea to have your furnace checked and any of your other heating equipment in the house and make sure that any heating equipment that's been dormant for the past year is either checked out, in good repair, and not to turn it on until it is checked. One other thing that's frequently neglected is the fireplace and the chimney. When you, when you, when you have a wood burning fireplace, that accumulates soot and ash inside the chimney. And believe it or not, that could catch fire. And you then have a fire in the chimney, which sounds like, well, you're supposed to have fires in the chimney, but really not. So what we recommend is that you get a chimney sweep to go up there and clean out your chimney as well and make sure that that's nice and safe. And any, any other issues in the house that pertain to fire safety, we ask that you pay attention, a little more attention at this, this time of year. This Saturday, as, as every year, we are gonna have an open house, the firehouse, at 141st and Hoxie, from 10:00 a.m. to noon. Come on down, bring the kids, bring the grandparents, check out the fire apparatus. And we're gonna, we're working on having an auto extrication demonstration as well, where we'll show how we use some of our auto extrication tools. And be happy to just answer any questions you have about the fire department. I do wanna mention one other thing, all the residents got, or actually, most of the houses got our flyer this year, which was, it's from the association, it does ask for a small donation, that actually funds our training. There was a little paragraph on the bottom of that, that letter that I usually don't have on there. And that is, if anybody's interested in joining the Burnham Volunteer Fire Department, then we ask that come on down on any Thursday night where we have our training, or certainly an open house. Be more than happy to let you know what it takes to become a Burnham volunteer firefighter. I'll just say, just for the moment, being a volunteer firefighter is no different than being a career firefighter in terms of training, we get the same training that the career firefighters do. We just make a lot less money at it. But we, fires are just as hot, the calls are just as interesting. So if anybody, or you know anybody at least the age of 18, in good health, and clean background, and wants to devote their lives to fire safety, and we also do EMS, as you heard, we do ambulance calls. It's, when I became a firefighter, changed my life. And it's welcome to have anybody else who's interested come back and learn more about it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you so much. Okay, so let's please, again, please let's support our department by coming out on Saturday and hope to see you all there again, bring friends, your neighbors, your parents, grandparents, bring everybody out. Let's support our family department.
Another question, chief?
Yes, sir.
Volunteer Fire Department, what's the credentials, high school, from?
High school graduate and valid driver's license. Basically that, good health, we do, we, there is a testing procedure, you know, it's, it's not just come on and join. There is, there's interview, testing, background check, medical procedures that we do. Like I said, similar to full-time firefighters. And there, there's a stipend that volunteer firefighters do get paid per call. So it's not just, it is quote-unquote volunteer, but it's actually paid on call. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, in honor of breast cancer month, I'm asking all to wear pink to our next meeting and to support all the survivors, current patients and supporters. Remember, anyone can develop breast cancer. So again, that's our next meeting, which will be held on, our next Tuesday meeting.
24th.
October the 24th, wishing everyone to wear pink. Reminder, curfew hours for Halloween will be 4:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. Pardon?
3:00 to 7:00.
Oh, I'm sorry. 3:00 to 7:00, and if you keep your porch lights on, we would think that would be a good thing. Everyone's asking about SEDA. And we have our two volunteer coordinators here that, from the community center. That's Mr. Johnson, Mr. Andrew Johnson, and Ms. Tanya. Tanya, could you please give us a report, what's happening with SEDA?
Hi, everyone, my name is Tanya, I'm one of the coordinators over at the Burnham Community Center. Please come along and see us. SEDA was out last year, and it was a very, very good turnout. We had a lot of people that came out from Burnham, and a few that came from Calumet City. Every time we had a program, our roster was completely full. And nobody, I mean, and everybody made their appointments. So thanks to our government making and passing the bill. Usually SEDA starts in September, but because it was so late in passing the bill, it's not starting until October 1st now. So it's three tiers to the SEDA, so starting from October 1st until November. Any household with a senior member of age 60 and over can start going out and get their energy bills paid. A household with a person receiving social security disability benefits. And also, the furnace program has also started for SEDA. So hopefully we'll get some dates in for the Seasons Community Outreach Services to come into the Burnham community like they did last year. Tier two will start in November 1st until December 1st. And tier two is for anybody whose household is with one or more disconnect of utilities, which is your lighting, of course, your gas bills. Household with children aged five and under, so that's when tier two starts, and that's in November. In December, all households are eligible at that time. So it's available, the program will be available for benefits open to all eligible low-income households at that time. And so hopefully, like I said, I'm working with the Seasons Community Outreach Center. So if you know anyone, if they need help beforehand, before we can get them to come into our community, I'm gonna give this password to Ms. Greer so you can see her, or you can also give me a call over at the Burnham Community Center. But hopefully they'll be here for at least, if not all three months, at least for, at least November, December, for sure.
Okay, you have a family that is in need of furnace?
Mm-hmm.
They have a child that has disability?
Yes.
Their funds are very limited?
Yes.
And they do not have a furnace in their home, would there be a possibility that SEDA can help them?
I'm pretty sure they can give them a hand, because they've done it before, especially since they have a young child in the household. And like I said, the furnace program has opened up as of October 1st. So just a little love to give Seasons Community a call, so I can give this to you as well, 'cause their number is on here. And they are the ones that provide the services here in Burnham as well.
Thank you, Senator.
So would someone have to call to make an appointment, or?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, they do have to call for an appointment, for now, for our Seasons community. But like I said, but they also have to make an appointment here when they come through our community also. Usually what happens is I give a list and timing, usually it opens up from about 9:00 o'clock to about 4:00, the ladies are here on a Saturday during the weekend. And the phone number, they just give the, I think, Lou's gonna, they give you guys a call, and they make the appointments that way. And then I get the list, and all they do is come up to the community center and they get serviced there. They bring their computers and all the information that they need to fill out at that time.
Okay, thank you so much. And again, thank you, Tanya, Mr. Johnson, and our volunteers, Jackie and Ms. Ralph, for your dedication to our community center and to our community. We thank you very much.
Thank you.
November the 4th, we have a forum on bullying. It's going to be held at the community center. The forum will start at 2:00. It's about bullying. Bullying can happen in schools, it can happen in the workplace, and it can happen on the internet. Bullying can happen anywhere. It is a growing problem among our teens and children. It can affect students' ability to learn. Students who are bullied are more likely, likely to experience low self-esteem and isolation. They perform poorly in school, they have a negative view of school. They experience physical symptoms, headaches, stomachache, problems sleeping, and they can experience mental issues. Bullying is a behavior, it is not an identity. So we're having a forum. Among our panel will be educators, we will have authors who have written books on bullying. We have students who have actually experienced bullying in their schools. We have teachers and principals that will be on our panel. Again, it is a forum, we would like our parents, grandparents to come out. Bring the children with you. We're gonna have an afternoon of learning and talking about bullying. Remember, November the 4th, 2017. We hope that everyone will attend. It's gonna start at 2:00, 2:00 o'clock promptly. And let's see, my last thing, remember, if anyone needs a sign, just let me know. Or if you need, if someone needs a sign, you can ask the ladies in the office, we have signs for you if you would like to have a sign to place in your window. And last but not least, this is for the Health Department, I'm not taking over this event. This is a healthy event, trustee. It's for the seniors, it's called Fall Feast, it's gonna happen tomorrow. Come out and hear about the fantastic services of, this is at Oak Tree Health Center. It's gonna be in Calumet Memorial Park District, it's tomorrow from 1:00 to 3:00. They're gonna have a jazz band, they're gonna talk about Medicare recipients. It's for seniors 65 and over. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, trustee Clayber, for your report and that information. Public Works in the Village, trustee Claybrook?
Good evening.
Good evening.
As I mentioned last week, we had street construction and repave on 145th Street from Marquette to Muskegon. And we'll be doing the same thing, repaving and street construction on the east side of 145th, down by the houses. Repave, the houses on 2601 through 2607, 145th Street. And that should start in about two weeks or less. And as I was riding around last week, I believe it was Thursday, I noticed the Burnham Public Works Department, they were out doing street repairs, they were doing patchwork and filling potholes and stuff like that, which is good because it's about to start getting cold. You know, you don't want vehicles running into the potholes and things like that, into the snow, not being concealed. And that's all that happened.
They did the repair at 141st and Saginaw, the 14108, you know, there was a dip in the street that is stinking parts of time. So we have to continue to put cold patches in it, that'll be out during the block rap project. And they feel we're gonna excavate that, and make sure we correct that solid.
Yes, solid, 140 at Marquette and then at Speedway.
Dave, did you have anything you wanna add to the street?
Yeah, question. We talked last meeting, would you call those speed bumps and get any more information on that?
Well, we haven't followed up yet, but we will, thank you.
Oh, then I'll?
Yeah, I just said, a comment, you know, garbage is like one of my biggest pet peeves. People just, you know, they'll seem to get the garbage in the garbage can for some reason. But someone throw out a TV set that's been there all summer and it hasn't been picked up? What do we do about that? Like, I don't think they realize it's been there for a month. And I don't think they realize that the garbage truck is not gonna take it, you know, what can we do?
Well, we might have a temporary solution. I'm not gonna follow up on probably this week, if not early next week, for sure. But right now, we just have not established a procedure for that. It's gonna cost additional money for us to have to have TV moved. So we're just still kinda up in the air right now. If anyone has any suggestions?
And also, like last week, there used to have a tires.
Yes, yes, yes. I had a few old-fashioned TVs, when the large TVs first came out. And so I got it fixed three times. And I said, well, next time the picture starts fading, I'm not gonna put any more money into it. And I didn't, I just sent it out in the alley. So of course, no one picked it up, but people start taking parts off of, parts off of it. So what I did was, I broke it down. I had my nephew and myself, we broke it down, put it in the garbage can. And so the shell was just left, they took the shell, and all the parts are gone now.
So this is a common problem, because they can't put them in the landfill, because they pass it to the law and it brings them. Okay. Thank you for that.
The drains, by the way, on Burnham Avenue, and the bridges are all plugged up again. The stains are growing, and the water is sitting up there when I was driving. So you're on the top of the bridge, driving through puddles. The state comes by and does it, but the state doesn't have it for a long time. Why don't we contract with the state, who comes by, we need to get in touch with them. I know Lane has somebody he calls, and they come right out. They're all, they're really bad now.
Okay, thank you. Or this resolution, and trustee Garcia?
Discussion of consideration and taking action to pass or not pass an ordinance, number 2017-0002. An ordinance making appropriations for all corporate purposes for the fiscal year beginning May 1st, 2017, and ending April 30, 2018, for the Village of Burnham.
Are there any questions or comments on the board, on the board?
Yes. This appropriations, proposed appropriation, the $400,000 for the Peace Pension Fund, is that our annual contribution, or is that our arrears?
Well, we try to bump it up as much as we can, you know, the probability can't afford to put it there in the nation league, so we just try to put it up a little bit every year to get across the goal line as possible.
So how much of that is our annual contribution? How much of that is directed toward the arrears?
Well, it would depend on how much the connectives are. For various reasons, we appropriate that amount. But sometimes, the corporations or the businesses appeal the taxes. And so if they do that, then that would delay the amount that would come in. And it might be another six months or a year before it actually would, would actually get to the fund. So, would you have anything to add to that statement? So?
No.
Well, I just, we have a certain number of retirees, and we contribute the same amount every year to these retirees. Do you know how much annually we contribute to the pension fund for these retirees, not including their arrears?
Well, I mean, the retire, I mean, the, the active people actually put into the pension plan and the appropriation, we put into that, whatever we can collect. But as I said, some of the amount we appropriate doesn't always get there. And if they get there, then it doesn't get there as timely as we have appropriated to be there.
So who has a progress situation?
Also, I see that we have quite a large amount of money contributed to IT purchase and IT maintenance. So hopefully, this should point forward that this money's more than $60,000, more than that, that we can upgrade our website and include maybe some financial matters on there and so forth. Be more on time with posting agendas and things like that. And maybe be able to collect payments online, since we're allocating so much money toward IT.
First, before we can go with the website, we have to make sure that our server is up to par. And do the antivirus.
Um, and do, um, the anti-viruses and, uh, the, um,
The firewall?
Firewall. And we upgraded a couple of computers. One of the five minutes missed, I believe Lieutenant Bonner got one, um, Deputy Chief got a new computer.
And they still got a new computer.
Right, and, um, there was one more. So we've also upgraded our, our, um, equipment, so, uh, that should go down.
But in order to get these payments online, though, there's a lot of, um, security protections that you have to have in order to be able to do that. And you have to pass a certain screening in order to take their credit card information. And so they're not gonna allow you to take it if you don't pass that certain screening. So it's a process. It's not something that can be done easily.
And you certainly don't want to compromise people's personal information.
It won't happen.
Well, hopefully some of these monies can be allocated toward that, and it's, it is a substantial amount. Also, I see that we have six hundred thousand allocated to the waterfront, the purchase of water, whereas in last year's budget, we spent over eight hundred thousand. So I, I foresee a deficit again. We're already half a million in, in the deficit with, uh, coming from one budget to pay this water budget. We're a half a million in, in the deficit. Um, and we're only allocating six hundred thousand opposed to spending eight hundred something thousand. Um, and I don't see anything, whereas we can, uh, catch up with that deficit, where our money's allocated, other than, um, do we have a plan other than, um, high, um, raising water prices, raising taxes to compensate for that deficit?
Well, there won't be any taxes raised. Water rate will have to be raised.
Is there anything in this, uh, in this ordinance for, uh, for the budget where we're compensating for that deficit?
Well, I think the, um, I think these figures, uh, put together for the, uh, for the Illinois EPA, right? Is that correct, Dave? Uh, I believe that should be the case. Right, right, right.
Nothing further?
Are there any other questions? Can proceed.
Make a motion to pass ordinance number twenty-seventeen zero zero two. An ordinance, an ordinance making appropriations for all corporate purposes for the fiscal year beginning May first, twenty-seventeen, and ending April thirty, twenty-eighteen, for the Village of Burnham.
Okay, does a motion approve by trustee Garcia to approve appropriation?
I'll second it.
It's talking about trustee Kat, will the trustee take a role, please?
Trustee Kat?
Yes.
Trustee Bonner?
Epstein.
Trustee Garcia?
Yes.
Trustee Greer?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Clayber?
Yes.
Motion passed. Thank you.